Hi, I'm Robin Schulz for the Hoover Channel. Don't forget to hit subscribe so you'll always know when we have a new video coming up.
Okay. If you would go ahead and first state your name for the record?
Ms. Hill.
Ms. Hill, we really appreciate you being here tonight. As I mentioned to you before the meeting tonight, you have the opportunity to either give an opening statement or a closing statement. Which would you like to do?
A closing statement.
Closing statement, okay. So with that, we're going to start to my left, and Counselor McClinton is going to ask the first couple of questions, and then we'll just move down the road with our questions.
Okay.
Hi, Ms. Hill, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Great. Got two questions. And the first one is, I think it was in your packet that Counselor Driver sent y'all. What's your understanding of the desegregation order that the school district's been under since 1972, or been around that long in the county? And can you explain in brief the five green factors that we're held accountable to with the DOJ?
Okay, so from my understanding of that is to ensure that all students, regardless of their race, ethnic group, and socioeconomic background, receive the same quality of education. Those factors include making sure that when you're talking about zoning, that there is no potential for segregation, as well as making sure all kids are able to get the resources in the school systems. Let me see, it's a couple of other ones.
Don't worry.
Yeah.
It may get stage fright. The other one's going to be facilities. It's going to be, you know, teacher representation.
Right.
And those are some of the things that I think a lot of the public doesn't understand. Here at Hoover, we have over 54 different languages spoken in the home, and you would think we're pretty diverse already. And this order is so old, over 50 years old. And I think a lot of people, I guess when you decide and you get chosen to work with your fellow board members, what would be, I guess, some of the things that you're looking forward to, to help us be released from that order?
So...
We're not already doing.
Okay. Well, I think that would take a look. I used to work for the state, and for the longest, state of Alabama was on the RC consent degree, okay? So for a very long time. So one of the things that, as a school board, what we would have to look at is to make sure, did we hit all those requirements? If so, do we have the data to support that we have met those metrics? What does that look like? Have we planned for the future as far as what are we going to do sustaining to make sure that we remain in compliance so we don't have to go back under a consent degree? So we'll have to take a look at all the factors, lay it out in a plan, check those boxes, and say, how do we have a long-term plan? This is what we did in the interim. What does it look like? And do we have the data, the support, that we have been consistently hitting those requirements?
Thank you. Good answer. Obviously, you've heard of RC3. It's been very successful, River Chaise Career Connection Center. A lot of disciplines that are offered there already. Some of us, there's always the idea of should you have a third high school, or should you build another RC3 2.0? What would be your thought process on that?
So, well, when it comes down to building another high school, I think there's a lot of things that go into play. That's something that you'll have to look at long-term, like what we're looking at from growth, how fast are we growing? And does our current economic right now, does it sustain us? Is it reasonable for us to have another school? Then we need to look at, are we tracking our kids after graduation? How many kids are entering directly into the workforce? How many kids are going to college? How many kids are coming back into the community? How many kids only have maybe a couple of college credits under their belt? And then we can make a plan as to what we need to do and move forward. Do we build a high school? Do we offer more career readiness? Where are we trending? What are we tracking? So I think it just sort of kind of depends on what the data shows us.
Okay. Thank you. I yield my time to Counselor Sweeney.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Hill. Just a couple of quick questions. What would you consider the strengths of our school district?
I think the strength of our school district, one is the education in itself. I have a child who is a product of Hoover City School, and I can speak personally about the quality of education that she has, and I can also see, because this same child is graduating next month from college, so I can also see how the education that she got here helped her in school. We talk about that all the time. So a lot of her college classes, she was already introduced to just by attending Hoover City Schools. So I know we have a great quality of education. What was your second question? I'm sorry.
No, that was the only question I had. The next one is, what do you feel is the most important issue facing the school district? And how would you go about addressing that issue?
I think the, I wouldn't necessarily call it an issue, but I think just making sure that we're all, we are preparing our students. Technology changes, academic, making sure we're one of the competitive schools in the district. Hoover City is always in the conversation when you talk about quality education. So we have to make sure, especially when you're talking about school choice vouchers and things of that nature. We want to make sure that we're not losing our students to private schools or, you know, school choice vouchers, those magnet schools that are out there. So I think that would be one of the biggest issues that we will be looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy, you're next.
Yes. How you doing, Ms. Hill?
I'm well.
So I just have two. What's your thoughts on regulations as it relates to books in the library, material in the library? What's your thoughts on that? And should it be, should they be regulated and why?
I'm kind of down the middle because, one, I believe in education, and I'm a reader myself. So I believe like if there's something there, a lot of times I've been in the library and picked up a book I normally wouldn't have, and I've exposed myself to some things that, you know, have been beneficial. But when you look at it from a parenting standpoint, you want parents to have a say in what their kids are exposed to and when they are exposed to, to certain materials. So I think it just sort of kind of depends on what it is. Because you have to understand, and as a school system, you're trying to do what's best for most students. You're not going to please them all, but you have to understand and respect people's individuality, parents, and what they want, what kind of material they do want to present to their child. So for me, I think it just sort of depends on what that material is.
Perfect. And my last one. My last one is, what's your thoughts and the impact if the Department of Education is eliminated?
I'm sorry?
What's your thoughts and the impact if the Federal Department of Education is eliminated?
My thought is, how as a school system, do we handle the needs of all our students? Not the ones that are gifted, the ones who receive special education, and those that are in the middle? Are we prepared for that? I worry about the impact of what does that look like for us as a community and as a school system. It scares me to think about that, but I think that when you have the right resources in place, I think when you have the right people in place, I think that we'll be able to navigate anything. Hoover has done a great job as far as educating our students. I think that as a board and as a city as a whole, I think that Hoover will be able to devise a plan to sort of kind of navigate those uncharted waters, to make sure that all kids still receive a quality education.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You're my time.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. President Lita.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ms. Hill, welcome.
Thank you.
Pleasure to have you with us. Thank you for your application, your interest in serving. You mentioned in your application diversity, equity, inclusion, or DEI as being a priority if you were selected for the board. You're probably aware that the president, through executive order, has eliminated all DEI programs at the federal government level.
Uh huh.
In 2024, the state legislature prohibited by statute any DEI programs at State Board of Education, state agencies. Are you suggesting that the Hoover Board of Education should enact some type of DEI policy that would go against that which the state and the federal government is doing?
No, absolutely not. I think when you, I think when you talk about things like DEI, I think it's just, I think you practice DEI without knowing that you're practicing DEI. When you're talking about a quality education for all, that's inclusive of all kids, regardless of their race, regardless of their socioeconomic status, regardless of their background. So although you're not saying specifically, like I have a, there's a law in DEI, I think that if you're going to say that you are a school system that is going to be inclusive to make sure that all kids are educated equally, that you're practicing diversity.
Very good. Thank you. And you mentioned school choice earlier, and you're probably aware the state is currently enacting the school choice bill that was passed last year, allowing children in failing schools to receive a voucher to go to a school who has opted in to the program to accept students. You're probably aware that the Hoover City Schools, rather, has not opted in. But what are your thoughts on that program? And if you were selected for the position, would you be in favor of Hoover schools opting in and accepting incoming transfers from failing districts?
So I think that, you know, all kids should be entitled to a quality education. However, as far as when you're talking about specifically Hoover City Schools, I think Hoover in itself has to look at, what do we have the capacity to do? Are we able to meet the need of those kids? It's one thing to accept a child because they need a quality education, but can we meet the needs of that particular child? What does that look like for us as a school system where every year our funding is up or down, just depending on what's going on? So you have to look at it from a whole, a realistic perspective. And it's not necessarily a bad thing if we can't accept those children at that point in time. It's not necessarily a bad thing if you accept only a few children at that time. I think it has to be a situation where we look at what we are currently working with. How does it affect the children that are currently in our system? And will it be beneficial overall to open the doors to something such as accepting those type of vouchers?
So Ms. Hill, have you had a chance to attend any Board of Education meetings?
Not in the last five years.
Five years, all right. So I'm sure you're probably aware that there are times when there are disagreements or criticism, where it can be a tense environment. Tell us how you handle disagreement or criticism, especially in a public or emotionally charged setting.
So, of course, you know, everybody's different. We all have our thoughts about, and we're passionate about different issues, and that's okay. I think that we can agree respectfully. I think that we can, we don't always have to agree, but what we have to remember is, what's the mission of our school? What are our goals and objectives? And if it's, is it for, is the decision that we're at difference about, is it for the greater good of those that we serve? We do it in a respectful manner, and when you're talking about who's in leadership or whatever, I believe, I'm not military, but some people say that I am. I believe in follow policy procedures, and I believe in the chain of command.
And how would you handle a situation where the board is divided on a major issue?
I think that goes back to the goals and missions of what we're trying to accomplish to school and what it is for the children. I think we, as the people that will be in charge, we need to take the egos out of it because a lot of time that's what it is. And I think that we need to look and sit back and assess the situation and say, is this beneficial? And how is it beneficial? And it's okay to disagree, but as long as the goal is being met and the children are being served, I think we can overcome it.
Very good. All right, you are welcome to give us your closing statement if you're ready.
Okay. I typed it out. Give me one second.
And take your time, don't feel rushed.
Okay. I'm at the age where I have to take the glasses off the seat and put them on the seat and all of the above.
And identify with that.
So I have over 20 years of social service experience focused on children's and family. I've dedicated my career to supporting those at the heart of our schools. I understand the challenges many families face and the importance of removing barriers so that every student has the opportunity to succeed. My work has centered around advocacy, problem solving, and connecting people with resources they need. And those same skills translate directly to the work that will be done with the Board of Education. I've also seen the impact of a strong education, not just as a professional, but as a parent. My daughter, a 2020 graduate of Hoover High, is set to graduate from Troy University next month. When asked about her college readiness, she proudly credits the education she received here in Hoover City Schools. That's a powerful testament to the strength of this school system. And I want every student in Hoover to leave our schools feeling as prepared and empowered as my daughter. I serve this community every day, both professionally and personally, and I'm ready to take that commitment a step further. While I have yet to work inside the school system, I am a parent who has always sought the best education for my child. I know what it means to want more for our students and to believe what is possible when schools and families work together. I bring the ability to advocate, to identify challenges early, and to provide practical, thoughtful solution that supports students and strengthen families. I'm a servant leader at heart, and I see this as an opportunity to serve in new and meaningful ways. It would be an honor to bring my experience, perspective, and unwavering dedication to Hoover City Board of Education.
Thank you so much. We're honored to have you here tonight. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Would you first state your name for the record?
My name for the record is Charles C. Crump.
Thank you for being here with us this evening. Have you decided whether you would prefer to do an opening statement or a closing statement?
I prefer to do a closing statement.
Okay, we'll save that for the end. So we're just going to start down here with Counselor McClinton. He's going to ask a couple of questions, and then we're going to move through the body with our questions for you.
Hey, Mr. Crump, how you doing?
All right, how you doing, sir?
Thank you for applying for education. Again, a lot of people don't realize this is a thankless job, it's an important job. So thank you for stepping in the arena. We really appreciate that. I'll have two questions, and take your time. My two questions are this. Under, I guess, ever since Hoover City Schools left Jefferson County to form its own school district, we had to carry the desegregation order of 1972 with us. Can you give me a good understanding of what that is? And what are the five green factors that we're beholden to, to be released from that order?
Well, sir, the desegregation order originates from, basically, I think it was called the stout case. And the five green factors, I don't know off the top of my head, as I've been trying to research it, I just haven't come across those just yet. But those are the factors that we have to address to be able to get the unitarian status as a school system as a whole. This from the Desegregation Act has been, to be honest with you, it's been looming over our heads for the past 50 years. And it's something that we really need to pursue to continue to get the unitarian status and the government oversight that we have pertaining to the system.
Okay. I'll give you a heads up, because most folks don't know what the five green factors are. Don't worry, it's not a trick question. I grew up in Birmingham City Schools, so I was part of that social experiment of getting kids around, okay? So I get that. So the factors are, we have to show our faculty, our staff, our facilities, our transportation, and our extracurricular activities, that there's not one for blacks and one for whites only. Now, I would think you'd probably agree, we don't have different busing systems for blacks and whites or facilities. I think some of the frustration that parents have, I know it's me being one, that we should be released from that order, because Hoover has over 54 different languages spoken in the home. It's a very diverse community. What do you see as you learn about this order and the five green factors? What do you see yourself in trying to help us, get us out of that order in working with your colleagues?
As far as that order, I think it was, I can't remember the judge's name off the top of my head, but he's...
Ackala.
Right, he's still alive. And the, one of the gentlemen, the lawyers who've prosecuted, he actually is still alive here in the city of Birmingham area. I would like to see how, what are the, you know, how are they're saying that we don't meet it today? As a parent, I participate in the football programs, basketball programs. Hoover has, what, over 118 buses? So I really would like to sit down and see exactly where are they saying we don't meet these factors? And then show them how, the other areas where we do excel, and be able to bridge this gap and obtain this status.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Crump.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely. Just a couple of questions. What are your thoughts on a third high school?
On a third high school? Well, sir, first of all, the question would be where? And then can we afford it? Those are two main things that I would look into, to see where would you put it and can we afford that? The idea of it is a great thing, but economically, can we as a school system sustain it and afford to build it? And then, most importantly, where would you put it? With projects like that, we can't be thinking about the here and now. We have to be thinking about 20 years from now, because realistically, that's where things are going to, you know, we have to be preparing for the future. So I would definitely, with that idea, I would say we have to do some great research and to see where, I just, you know, that's just the best way I can answer it right now.
Got it. Okay. What do you feel is the most important issue facing our school system? How do you plan to address that?
So honestly, I don't know what is the most important issue, but I do know the issue of the unitarian status is an issue that does need to, and I think the unitarian status will be easily solved, just simply getting people to the table and let's address those five issues and see where we can meet that. And then, honestly, I know without a doubt, with a system this size, there's more issues than just that one that I'm not aware of. So once you become aware of it, get into the system more, dig in deep, then I would see, I would be able to better answer that question then.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, how you doing?
All right, sir, how are you?
Good. So I just have two questions. So looking at K-12 education, what's your thoughts or your beliefs associated with, should material in libraries be regulated and the impact of that?
You're pertaining, pertaining the regulations to certain subjects or issues? Are you, I mean, what subjects are there?
Any all material that is entered into the library for our kids to read? Should that be regulated at a certain point? What's your thoughts about regulating material or books and or books?
So, yes, we do have to be careful with that, because some of the books and that are now entering into the systems, they are touching upon sensitive areas that the society as a whole is wrestling with. So we need to really look into that, so that way we don't, we're careful of what we expose our children to. So that's, that would be with those books, I would definitely would look into with the legal teams and all the many different people that was involved, would be involved with that before we just flat out and say, here, here's a book, let it be inside of our library system. Because, I mean, there, there's a lot of, the world has changed. It's not like when he and I was in the Birmingham City School System. So we have to be careful of that.
My last question, President Trump did from an executive order to eliminate the Department of Education. What is your thoughts on that and the impact of that?
Honestly, my thoughts on that, with him eliminating the Department of Education, it's going to play into our favor with the Unitarian Act. Because now some of those things with the oversight of government overreaching, telling us things and dictating certain things, a lot of that is going to go away with the Department of Education. We'll be able to educate our students based on what is here in our environment. Hoover City Schools, we're not like a lot of other school systems where we're dependent on so much of the federal funds.
Mr. Crump, welcome. Glad to have you here.
Yes, sir, thank you.
If you're selected for the board, I can assure you, you will be at some point contacted by a parent addressing a serious matter that's affecting their student. How would you respond to that parent and help them get resolution as a board?
Mr. Lita, that's a, that's a very good question. First thing is to listen, and then get all the facts from that parent. Then go to the other board members and relay this issue to them, and then allow the superintendent to allow his chain of command to deal with whatever said issue it is. In my experience, from my professional field, as a person in a board position, I want the people to come to me with the problem, but a lot of times, you're going to find out that there is actually two problems. Now you wonder what would those two problems be? One, whatever the problem is that that parent has. And then two, the second problem is, why did they feel like the chain did or did not work? So with that, as the parent brings us those problems, bring it to the board, allow the superintendent and his chain to do, to follow their process, and then follow up with the superintendent, the board, and the parent, so that way we can make sure whatever, both of those problems, be they known or unknown, we address both of them. But as a board member, no, it's not my job to run out here and run in the classroom and no, that's not, no.
Each of our life experiences obviously bring us certain ideas and mindsets to any position that we serve in. As a veteran, as a man of faith from your application, certainly you have those same mindsets and ideas too. How would you balance your personal beliefs, your personal convictions, your political views with the needs and demands of a diverse school system?
Well, when it comes to certain things like that, I would definitely confer with my fellow board members. And then we also have a legal team. But as from professionally, I know every word you say is being recorded, especially in our day and time. So if it was something like that, I would definitely seek counsel amongst, amongst us first, and then see where do I stand physically, and then go from there.
Mr. Crump, have you had occasion to attend any Board of Education meetings in Hoover?
To be honest with you, I've watched all your meetings virtually, or listened to them virtually. And instead of being here in person for the past, since I've been here in the community, I've, I've just listened to them basically on the, through the YouTube app of that way.
In doing so, you've probably noticed that sometimes there can be some tension in the room. How would you handle an environment where there was criticism or disagreement, especially in a public or emotionally charged environment?
In those environments... In those environments, we allow those to disagree. We allow them to, allow them to, allow their feelings, but then they need to be civilized. And if it was to that point where it became uncivil, then yes, we would have some additional law enforcement here to have them controlled. But we have to understand people that come in here, they have issues. And they, they're bringing their issues and concerns with us, I mean, to us, because they believe we have solutions. So it may even, with some of the issues may even require us taking that one person to the side and say, hey, can we have a private meeting with you and let's sit down and at least hear them out? And see if there is some validity to their claim. But I, I believe letting people, you know, like as long as you're civil, I'm sorry, just as long as you're civil with it, I have no problem with you being emotional and being passionate. Because we have to understand, people are talking about their children. So there's nothing, I mean, we cannot overlook that passion.
Thank you. If you had a situation where the Board of Education was divided on a major issue, how would you work to try to resolve it?
The question would be, what, I would really wanna wonder what is the issue that we are divided on? And as a person that have had to deal with divided issues before, we sit down and look at it individually and let's everybody see why, why are we divided? And then what, what's going on? And then see what do we need to do to come together so that we can present ourselves as one city Hoover board? Not just the city of Hoover and its board members.
Very good. You can give your closing statement when you're ready. Take all the time you need.
Well, by now, everybody knows who my name is. My name is Charles Crump. I'm a father of three. My two children actually are here in the audience. I felt it important for them to be part of this. Because they're the primary reason of this. I don't take this position lightly. Right now, our city, our country is at a fragile point. Like one of the members had said, Mr. Murphy said about the, doing away with the Department of Education. The board position, it plays so much into our infrastructure of our city. Why? Right now, we have a project study going on with the Galleria Towers. When a company comes, or when anybody comes to this area, they're gonna first look at the school board. They're gonna look at what are the educational scores? That person who is over that company decision that has a child that has unique situations going on, they're gonna look into see how is our school system dealing with those issues? And not only that, this board plays so much into as far as crime rate. If we're not properly educating our children in the area, our crime rate is gonna deplete too. So I don't take this just as something to come up here and volunteer my time for. And I, I'm not coming for as a lifelong position either. I'm, I'm just coming to serve. It's not a big I, it's not a big me. Cause I know, one of the question was how do I quantify and what are my goals? Honestly, in a position like this, we won't be able to see the results of our work until twenty years down the road. So long as I do my best, leave my best, if I become a board member, I will immediately go from being a father of three children to a father of over fourteen thousand children. Because that's how I wanna treat every last one of them. I will become a man now from having a small business to having over eighteen hundred employees that look up, listen to us, and that we're leading and guiding. So it's not all about me. So, closing. When things happen in our community or in our schools, the first thing somebody says is our thoughts and our prayers are with them. So my suggestion is this, let's let our thoughts and prayers be with us now, before something tragic or before things get out of hand. And I thank you and I pray that you'll consider my application. And whoever gets the position, if they want me to help, I'd be glad to help in any kind of manner. Again, it's not about me. It's about our children and our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crump, and welcome, Crump family. Thank you for coming. Well done.
Thank you.
Right. All right. So first, would you state your name for the record?
Absolutely. So my name's Paul. My last name's Dangle, D-A-N-G-E-L. And I live on three fifty-seven Oak Trace in Hoover.
Very good. So have you decided whether you would rather give an opening statement or a closing statement?
Yes, I believe I'd rather do a closing statement.
All right. So we'll save that for the end. And first, we'll start with Councilor McClinton, who will ask you some questions and then we'll move down the line.
Excellent.
Paul, thank you very much for applying. It's a big, big thing for the community. It's unpaid, a thankless job. So thank you for applying.
Absolutely.
I have probably just two questions. In one of the questionnaires that Council Driver had you all fill out, one of the things about the understanding about the Stout versus Jefferson County Board of Education segregation course, case, can you give me an idea, your understanding of it? And what are the five green factors that were held accountable to?
Absolutely. So I think, you know, what I'd start off is saying the ultimate goal is to get to the unitary relief from that, that original order. But my understanding of the case of the order is that it started many years ago when Jefferson County was, was a different place than it is now. And as Hoover split off, there was some concern about segregation and segregation of schools and segregation in the county. It kinda seems as though it was not as popular of a conversation until Gardendale kinda stepped up and said, hey, we wanna split away too. And there was the concern then at that point that we were getting too many segregated groups to get away from the segregation. So it, the order, as I understand it, is, is the five green zones. And I will try to remember from memory, but I do recall that one of them's transportation certainly. And, and really, in every one of these five green zones, it's about equality and about ensuring that we're not segregating, right? And that we're not putting our schools or our transportation or our teachers or any of the above in a situation where it disrupts what Hoover should be. So transportation, certainly one of them, faculty and staff being another one. The facilities being a third one, as well as, it was, there's two more and I'm drawing a blank on them, so.
You're gonna get one of zoning and one's extracurricular activities.
Excellent.
So I, I grew up here in Birmingham. I went through that little social experiment many years ago.
Right.
I understand definitely the intent of what Birmingham and the South used to be versus what they are today. I think a lot of people do understand how difficult it is to get us out of that unitary status because it's much more complicated than people think. And some of your colleagues over here would say the same as well. But working with your colleagues, what steps would you take to help get us out of that status?
Absolutely. So I think everything that we do as far as decisions and, and we look at the schools and if there ever is a conversation about building another school or adding a, a different activity at a school, that has to come into play. It has to come into play and has to be part of the conversation. Because we need to make sure that everything we do keeps us in that green zone and keeps us in the green area for an extended period of time to be able to go back and have that conversation with judge, with the, the lawyers and say, this is everything that we've done. This is every step we've taken and we understand how vitally important it is. And I, I think it's also important to talk about how diverse Hoover is, right? And you start talking about the number of different ethnicities and languages that are spoken. And that factors into it too. It does seem as though, as you get into the order, that it's really a lot about segregation and about race. But there's so much more to Hoover than that. And I think that has to be something that we have conversations about and explain that we're, you know, looking at the entirety of the picture.
Okay. Last question.
Sure.
Something I know that you were probably involved in because you have a culinary background, hospitality background, RC three.
Yes.
Do you think RC three should be expanded? I know some people say have a third high school, some people say we should expand RC three, make it two point oh. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll, I'll address the third high school first, right? Even if there was the decision that enrollment was increasing, which to my knowledge it's not, it's actually has declined the last couple of years. But increasing and, and there was a need for the third high school, that's a ten to twelve year project, right? By the time you buy the land, clear the land and, and get that going. So that's not an immediate situation that's going to resolve itself. So that does lead back to your question about RC three. I think one of the things I would like to see, as you see, the, the board in last year approved the two and a half million dollars to expand automotive, right? Certainly with Honda and Mercedes and, and other entities around, that makes sense. I think as you look at what's next and, and begin to grow it, you've gotta get some, and maybe it's a citizen advisory board or a company advisory board, to figure out what skill sets are needed. Who's hiring? Who's looking for those students? And what could we do to make the most impact with that? Because as I put in a lot of my questions, to me, one of my most important factors is where are our children as they graduate? Are they ready to go to college, to the military, to the career? And I don't weigh one more than the other as it, as it looks at that. And if there's just something that we know we could get folks hired, these students hired when they were ready, when they came out, that we as a board or we as the city of Hoover could put into place, I mean, what an awesome situation to have, right?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for being here, Paul. Just a couple of quick questions. What do you feel is the most important issue facing our school district? And how do you plan to address this issue?
So I feel like it kinda goes back to the question I just discussed with, with Councilman McClinton is that graduation and what happens after graduation. Certainly, from my time with the chamber, our goal has always been to get students to graduate and come back to Hoover, right? And there, we've all had neighbors and friends or even our own children. I'm not there yet, but other, other children who graduate and say, I gotta go live in Nashville or I gotta go live in Atlanta, right? Part of that is because it's cool and hip and there are things to do there that Hoover hasn't quite, or even Birmingham hasn't quite developed yet or embraced. And hopefully that comes down the road. But the other part of it is those quality, high paying jobs that I'm ready for after college or even after high school. And again, it goes back to RC three or to the schools of what can we develop to have them want to stay here, to have them have jobs? You know, I, I certainly know that as these children today, we'll call them, they come out and they say, you know, I wanna make a hundred thousand dollar. I've been told for two years I can make a hundred thousand dollars my first year out of school. Maybe you can if you can write code and do some of those things, right? But I, I think we have to find those trades. We have to find those areas to keep those students engaged and want to keep them in our Hoover area. So I would work, as, as we mentioned, with RC three. It's a program that I've been very involved with through the years. I was asked, consider a big honor, I was asked to join their PTO next year. And my daughter's going to go there for cyber innovation. And I think that, you know, just having those opportunities are fantastic.
And you've been around the school system, being part of the school foundation.
Yes.
What would you consider the biggest strength? What are we doing, what are we doing right?
Oh, my goodness. It's, it's so hard to pinpoint one thing that we're doing right, right? But there are so many things that we're doing right. And I think a lot of it right now seems to involve mental health. I, I think, you know, seeing the proactive approach to a lot of the things we're doing with individual education plans and five oh fours, but also our counselors, and what a commitment last year from this board and from Dr. Kevin Maddox to, to hire more interventionalists and to have more interaction with children. You know, when we started, when, when I was a child, and based on the numbers I've looked at, one out of every hundred and fifty kids, children, students had autism. And they're saying that number now is as high as one out of every thirty-six. So, you know, just looking at Hoover High School and twenty-nine hundred kids, you will round it off a little bit, right? But I mean, that, that number is, is high. And two or three counselors and interventionalists are probably not gonna get that done. So I think that's something we're doing well is adding to that and recognizing that as a challenge. I could go on and on, RC three and, and number of them, but that's, that's the one I'd point to.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Hey, Paul, how are you?
I'm good, Derek. How are you?
So just two questions for me. As it relates to K-12 education and the material books and things that are published in the lab, in their libraries, do you believe there should be some form of regulations on that? Or what's your thoughts about regulating material within the library?
I think, you know, as far as regulating the material, I'm not sure that I have a strong opinion. But what I would say to you on that is I think it should be age appropriate. And I think as we look at what's in our elementary schools and our middle schools and our high schools, it needs to be age appropriate. And, you know, they're, one of the things that, just being honest with you, I struggled with a little bit this year. And, and had a great conversation and, and it, some very positive came out of it. But with my daughter's teacher in ninth grade at, at Hoover, they were studying Romeo and Juliet, right? And I won't ruin it for you, but there's a suicide in that, in that book. And it was during a time in our system where it was, it was being talked about a lot. And, and I just, I kinda had a challenge. And again, I didn't, I never approached as we shouldn't do it, right? It was more the approach of, please help me understand how we're teaching this, how we're working through this. Are counselors involved? Are we having those conversations? So I think it goes back to age appropriate, time and situation. I certainly can see the value and, and understood the lesson in having that conversation. But I'm not sure I would want my fourth grader reading that, right? So I think that's where you have to, have to draw the line. And we have to have some trust in our librarians to make good decisions and, and have those books in place. We, we need our kids to be kids. And I certainly would be very happy if they were in the library reading books and not on a cell phone.
And my last question, there's some discussion about Department of Education being abolished.
Yes.
What is your thoughts on that?
Wow, you know, that was one that hit me kinda hard, right? I think when it, when it came out, my concern was what happens with the IEPs? What happens with the five oh fours? What happens with all the children that we are trying to protect and get to that next level? And while I don't know that I overall agree with getting rid of the Department of Education, I do appreciate that there was discussion about those things. And there was discussion about, and it wasn't just a, you know, let's pull the Band-Aid off. I think that it's something that we all have to be cognizant of and we all have to be aware of. But I don't know how much control we can yield over keeping the Department of Education, right? So I think as board members, as citizens, as parents, we have to read up on that and, and understand what it mean. If it completely goes away, if Ms. McMahon completely takes it away, what does that mean for our schools and what does that mean for Hoover? And the last point I'd make, and Dr. Maddox and I had this conversation a few weeks ago, is our district has the ability, within reason, to do what it needs to do. So if the Department of Education goes away and they say, well, we're not going to have individualized education plans. And I'm being a little dramatic because I don't think we're at that point. But if they said that it's still Hoover's decision, if we're going to write a document to take care of these children and have a program in place with counselors and, and do those things, right? Unless there's a federal law that says you can't do that, that's a different conversation. But they're just saying, as I understand it, that we're not going to support some things. And we're not going to, it seems like it's mostly, at least right now, centered around student loans, which is a little bit challenging because a lot of these students need those to go to school. But as we talked about earlier, if we get a career and get things going, then maybe there are different opportunities. Yeah.
Mr. Dangle, pleasure to have you here. Thank you very much for applying and your interest in serving.
Thank you.
One of the critical issues you put in your application is school funding.
Yes.
You and I have talked about.
Yes, sir.
I'll pick, name two. Let's say two areas where our school district is coming up short that money would Let's say two areas where our school district is coming up short that money would be.
I think that the first area, and it's probably more capital than coming up short, but we're starting to see the age of some of these buildings come into play. And I know on the capital list that the amount that was just approved for bathrooms and for, you know, day in and day out facilities that wear out over time. Certainly being in the hospitality industry, I'm familiar with that and no building's going to last forever without doing so. That's one area I would look at. And I know capital, you know, with the twenty nine point four million that was spent or approved this year, a little bit different than the overall two hundred fifty eight million dollars, but that's an area that I think certainly deserves some focus because, again, even if we decided tomorrow, which I'm in no way advocating for at this moment, but if we said, if the board got together and said, hey, let's build a third high school, that's a ten year project, right? So by then Hoover High School's ten years older. Greystone Elementary, ten years old, Bluff Park, some of these schools that are facing some of that stuff. So that's an area I think that we need to focus on. And my second area of that would be, I would tend to lean towards doing something more than we're already doing for that special education area. And I know that's something that we did put focus on in twenty twenty four into the twenty twenty five school year, but I just think the need just continues to grow. These children, I just did a book club that Hoover High School put on with, with Dr. Hogan about the anxious generation and how these children have grown up differently because they've always had a cell phone in their hand than we did, where we were out playing with our friends and doing things differently. And so, you know, getting back into the classroom and into learning, it was humorous. Lee Holsey, as I'm sure you're aware, just passed the, or brought forward the cell phone bill through the, the House in Montgomery. And I was talking, discussing with my daughter, she's like, oh, no, I gotta have my phone in class. Like, no, you don't. Like, no, you don't. You'll be just fine. So I think that's an area that we need to focus on.
Thank you. A couple of questions. Mr. Dangle, how many Board of Education meetings in Hoover have you had occasion to attend?
I have been to two in my time. So yeah, I get a demerit there for sure, but certainly have attended other meetings, but I know that wasn't your question.
So follow up to that, whether or not it happened at these two, I'm sure you're aware that it's not always a cordial environment. Sometimes there can be criticism or disagreement.
Absolutely.
How do you handle disagreement or criticism, especially in a public or emotionally charged environment?
Yeah, well, first I will say, as again, we talked about growing up, right? So I grew up in a different environment and I grew up in one of those situations where I had a football coach that would yell all day, every day, right? That was the mentality. And I, I've always told people that if you want me to stop listening, you can just yell and I'm just going to sit there and take it. If you want to have a conversation or get into my feelings, just sit down and say, I am deeply disturbed by, you know, just that quiet dad voice, right? So the emotionally charged part of it, as somebody who's in hospitality industry who has guests regularly, twenty five years of having guests that are, that are charged up, angry brides, angry individuals that have stayed with us for a number of reasons, I think the answer is really you just, you try to find that common ground. What, what do you have in common? And sometimes honestly, it's looking at somebody and disarming them and just saying, you know what? You're right. We didn't handle that well. We really didn't. I didn't, or I didn't, or I hear your opinion, but let me tell you where I'm coming from. And I think it's, it's that opportunity to just be humble. And you're not going to please everybody every single time, but a willingness to have those conversations, not shy away from them. I think we've all at different times had that phone call, we have to return and we go, but you pick up the phone, you make the call and you do what you're supposed to do.
All right. So with respect to the Board of Education itself, when the board is divided on an important issue, what steps would you take to try to reach resolution?
Yeah, and certainly this is something I've had experience with. As you well know, we were on a board with me with Leadership Hoover and, and been there for a number of years, as well as the Chamber of Commerce here in Hoover and, and the Schools Foundation. It's going to happen. And I think you have to talk through it. You have to understand everybody's side and try to find that commonality. I had a situation just today related to another board I'm on for a sales organization. And it's an individual that had applied to take some time off from our organization. And previously they had taken time, they came back, they stood up in front of us, said, hey, I'm part of this, I want to be here. And now we're three weeks later and this individual has asked for a leave of absence. And I was, my first gut was no, but I very fortunately waited and saw some other responses from other individuals on the board that were saying, prayers for you. Yes, absolutely. And so I picked up the phone and I called one of them and I said, hey, I was really about to vote no on this. Tell me what I'm missing. Well, there was a very elaborate story and a very good reason. And so I was very glad that I took that time, that extra step to work with my board and to have the conversation of like, help, help me understand what I'm missing here.
Very good. All right, we will listen to your closing statement whenever you are ready.
Excellent. It's not very long. I just, in closing, want to thank each one of you. And as you said at the beginning, it is a unpaid, thankless job, but that doesn't mean that I want it any less. It doesn't mean that I don't want to, to be here. You know, it's something I've spent the greater part of the last week thinking about and spending time with. And I'm deeply invested in education and in seeing Hoover succeed and the Hoover City Schools in particular succeed, both through all the programs that we have. And one thing I didn't mention earlier is we talk a lot about high school, right? But it doesn't start in high school. These kids that are building cars in eleventh grade, that didn't start in eleventh grade because they got there that day. It starts with our wonderful elementary schools and is fostered through our middle schools and gets into the, the high school and they're given those opportunities. When I hear a neighbor tell me the other day that they went to the University of Tennessee on a, on a visit to look at the school, and they're looking at Tennessee as well as Auburn, and the, the students at Tennessee told her that the things she's been doing at Hoover High School, they don't even offer at Tennessee in an advanced program. So it's amazing. And I just, I have thrive and passion for that. It's a chance to make a lasting difference. And I know from both a professional and a personal standpoint, it means a lot to me. And I think that my time, my quarterly meetings with Dr. Maddox, being involved with the, the group that is raising over a hundred thousand dollars annually for the Hoover City Schools Foundation has only just fostered how much I love Hoover schools and really would like to, like this opportunity.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So if you'll first just state your name for the record?
Yes. Okay, so it's not pronounced like it looks. It's called, it's Laila. And it really is a Swahili and the Y is pronounced like an E in Swahili. So it's Laila. If you say Laila, it's okay. I get it every day.
Thank, thank you. So have you decided whether you would rather give Aiden opening statement or a closing statement?
Closing statement.
Closing statement. So we'll save that for the end. Counselor McClinton is going to kick us off with a couple of questions for you.
All right. Hey, Ms. Hamilton, how you doing?
Great.
Thank you for applying, stepping in the arena. It's a big deal, big deal for the community. I think what makes our city so great is a great school district and it starts with a great school board. I'm just going to ask two questions. And some of these questions, I think Counselor Driver included in your, in your packet. One of them is about the desegregation order that Hoover took on years ago when it wanted to split off from Jefferson County. We always hear, I'm sure you've been on the foundation, you always hear about how we have fifty four different languages spoken in the home, we're very diverse. But these five green factors of faculty and zoning and facilities and transportation and extracurricular activities, the school board and their attorneys have to constantly show to the DOJ, the NWA CP and so forth, that we don't have a dual system, one for blacks, one for whites, which to me, in my opinion, is kind of antiquated because I think we're past that. But we still have it there. It's lingering. In, in your experience on the foundation, other stuff I've seen you do, volunteering, what do you think is the best way going forward to get us out of that order to prove that we are not a dual system?
I've learned a lot about this over the years and I really believe that it's going to be just intentional action on our behalf. You know, making sure that we are doing the steps needed to make sure that every student gets equal access to everything. And when you talk about equity, it doesn't mean that kids are getting exactly the same thing, but they're getting exactly what they need to achieve academic excellence. You know, we need to have programming that shows that we're diverse, such as the multicultural fair that they had at Hoover High School a few weeks ago. That's incredible. And, you know, Hoover, we are a very diverse school district, a very diverse community, which is why we came here. And I feel like if we're just very intentional and we make sure that we don't show any differences between race or learning style, that eventually we will find unitary status.
Thank you. My second question, I'm sure you've always heard about having a third high school, but we also have a great thing called RC three. Do you think that with all the things we have at RC three, cyber tech, the trades, culinary, fire college and other things like cosmetology, I think automotive comes on next year, do you think that investing in another RC three, like a two point oh, is the way to go?
You know, I don't even know if investing in another RC three is necessary. I feel like we just need to expand it. I mean, if you feel like we need to have an RC three two point oh, just because there's not enough space, maybe that's the case. But I think we just need to expand the trades. I mean, it's incredible having the automotive part that you were discussing and the cosmetology and the barbering, that's awesome. But I mean, and looking what we offer, why haven't we thought about plumbing? Why haven't we thought about building, constructing inspectors and aviation academy or just aviation mechanics? There's so many other options. And so if there's space on that campus, don't build another one. Don't, you know, fix it if it's not broken, just expand upon it.
Thank you very much.
You're so welcome.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Hamilton.
Hi, thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions. What do you believe to be the roles of a school board member?
I think the role of the school board member is to learn and listen to the community, listen to the parents, listen to the teachers and listen to the students as well. And I feel that the school board members, they have to make policies, they have to make decisions and those policies and decisions should be determined by the data. It should not be determined by feelings or political affiliations. It really needs to be just solely based on the data and it's not a me situation. There's no I in the Board of Education. You know, it's, it's, if there is some kind of a split between the board, you don't walk away with a chip on your shoulder. The majority said this and you were in the minority of it. The board made that decision. So I feel like it's just really listening and basing all the policy changes and decisions on data.
Okay, thank you. What do you feel is the most important issue facing our school district? How do you plan on addressing that issue?
The one that I feel is most pressing would be safety. And that's more than just physical safety, but that's emotional and social safety as well. I will say, as far as the physical safety, the SROs, I think we need to make sure that we continue to foster that partnership with the Hoover Police Department. And side note, FYI, Officer Yarborough is the best, in my opinion, and I think everybody at Trace Crossings would say the same. But as far as emotional and social well-being, I think we can all agree that there's been a lot of mental health challenges, increase in suicide rates. And, you know, our students just aren't doing well. And a lot of times it looks like the student might be doing great. They might have excellent grades, achieving a lot of things, and we don't know what they're struggling with. Some kids are falling through the cracks and we don't find out until it's too late. And so I spoke with Terry Coleman, who is the director of all of the student counselors, and I was asking her, what do you need? What do you think y'all need? And she said, universal screening. And so there's a company called Renaissance and they do universal screening and it's this digital platform and it does assessments and it helps to identify students that either need math or reading intervention. But it also identifies students that have emotional and social problems and they could be at risk of getting worse. And this data is highly reliable and they can take this data once they figure out which students need intervention. And then it gives them a step-by-step plan. And so, I mean, I think she mentioned it might be a hundred thousand dollars, but based on what she thinks, and I believe her, that this would be something very necessary for Hoover. That's one thing I would think of. The second thing that I think we should consider is something called students, students mentoring or students partnering with other students. And basically it's this nationwide program where the students are trained to be peers, mental health peers. And they can talk to their friends, they are trained on mental health facts and they can encourage their friends and their peers to see a trusted adult. So that would be, you know, the peers helping one another. And I think that's important for kids to be able to notice when their friends might be having problems. I know my middle schooler told me recently that one of his friends that he's been friends with for many years since Trace had been acting differently. He was dressing differently. He saw him crying in the hallway one day and he asked him what was wrong. Little boy was being bullied and he was trying to fit in with this different group of kids and they weren't accepting him. And he said, I don't want to be here. And my son didn't know what that meant, but he just knows what has happened before. And so he encouraged him to go see Ms. Gibson, the seventh grade counselor. And he did. And he ended up going home that day and he returned the next week and he told my, he told my son, I'm feeling much better. So I think teaching our kids how to sense, you know, when something's wrong and just encourage that person to see somebody would really help.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, how are you doing?
I'm great.
So two questions for me. In K twelve education, what are your thoughts about library or material books in the library? Should it be regulated? Any concerns around that? What's your, no right or wrong answer, just?
Yeah. You know, as far as regulation, I think we just need to make sure there's nothing that's above the maturity of the students that are in that particular school. I know my nine-year-old, we don't let him watch anything above PG at this point. So I wouldn't want him to read anything that was above PG in that case in the library. So I think it's based on what age group they are, but at the same time, I like how the students, or the teachers for that matter, let the parents know, hey, we're going to be watching this movie, reading this book. If you have a problem, let me know. So giving the parents an opportunity to make that decision as well, I think that's important.
My last question. So what's your thoughts about the elimination or to abolish the Department of Education? And the impact of that?
Right. That's a lot. You know, I think there's no right or wrong answer to this one either. I feel like we just need to prepare ourselves if it does happen. I know that the federal government does give us money. It's not as much I know as we would like for it to be, but I think we might need to make sure we're prepared to have alternative resources. We might need to partner with private and public partnerships. And it's going to take a lot of our, our community helping us. I know that a little over fifty percent of our funding comes from the community and we're just going to have to get our community to give more. I know in the foundation, our big fundraiser is coming up May second, Derby and Dining. And if we could just encourage our community, our neighbors to come out and support that, take part in the silent auction, the PTOs have incredible fundraising. And instead of just getting the parents to help with the PTO fundraising, get the neighbors to also help. So we're going to have to find alternative funding if it does happen. And I feel like we just need to make sure that we maintain the excellence of standard that we have with our academics and also make sure that we maintain the student-teacher ratio that we have.
Thank you.
Hi, Ms. Hamilton.
Hello.
Applying and thanks for being here with us.
Thank you.
If you're appointed the board, you most assuredly will be approached by a parent of a student with a personal matter, be it against a principal or a concern about a particular teacher.
Right.
How would you address that for the parent? Because you are representing parents in your community. So how would you represent that and resolve it for the board?
That actually happened today, even though I'm not on the board yet. A mother approached me because she was upset that her student or her son, as well as another mother's student, they haven't been able to get an I E P for either one of their boys. And she was very frustrated with it and said that she didn't feel like she was getting support from the assistant principal and she didn't know, you know, what she should do. And my suggestion, should this happen again sometime down the line, would be, you know, I need you to reach out to, you know, the principal, if it's the assistant principal. And if that doesn't help, then you need to go to the Board of Education or like talk to the, not the board, but the superintendent and see if the superintendent can do something. You know, obviously I'm not going to make any promises or any decisions on my behalf. But hopefully if she goes to get other information and resources, you know, if that's something that needs to bring brought up to the board during a meeting, so be it. But I'm not going to be making any decisions at that moment.
My final question is regarding school funding.
Hmm.
It's been discussed for a number of years about holding a referendum and allowing the taxpayers approve or the residents approve of the opportunity to vote on increased ad below on tax.
Hmm.
At the point, would you support allowing citizens of Hoover to vote to increase taxes on themselves to further fund this?
Well, I think that kind of goes back to the conversation we were talking about, the dismantling of the Department of Education. You know, if that happens, again, we're going to need more money for our students and we move here, you know, for great education. If we're going to continue to support our schools, that's just going to have to happen. And then also you have to consider the COVID nineteen fund, you know, has been exhausted and we still have to figure out a way to make sure we don't have to dip into our reserves and continue to maintain that standard of excellence that Hoover has. And I know with that money, that was used to get sixteen part-time interventionists, I believe. And I know that they're going to continue having those sixteen and I believe you guys hired hmm, another twelve or so, maybe more. But I know there's already a commitment to keep them. But I think the community should be able to vote on that and I would hope that they would vote to increase because we want to protect our schools. You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. How many Board of Education meetings here in Hoover have you had occasion to attend?
I have been to one in person, which was this week. But I will say, the beauty of having the meeting streamed on YouTube is fantastic when I'm a Uber driver for my kids and also I'm able to download the minutes online. That's fantastic. But also, being on the PTO for nine years, being involved with the HPTC Hoover City School Foundations, I find myself in rooms with superintendents, with principals, with other PTO presidents, and I get to hear other perspectives of what's going on in the school. And I've seen city council members at some of those meetings and I know that the superintendents come to some of our Hoover City School Foundation meetings. So while I might not be present at the board meetings this year and I just listened to it via YouTube, I do know a lot about what's going on in the community based on the organizations that I've chosen to involve myself in.
Understood. I'm sure you've noticed as part of your observation of those meetings online and otherwise, that sometimes there can be a lot of criticism or disagreement. How would you handle disagreement or criticism, especially in a public or emotionally charged environment?
Hmm, saw a lot of that during COVID. I felt bad for all school boards across America during that time. And I, I know it would be hard in like a political climate like that or with parents being upset. I remember my very first school board meeting, the superintendent, Kathy Murphy was there and it was talking about the rezoning and that was a very hot topic and a lot of upset people in Hunter Street Baptist Church. But I feel like it's just important to maintain your cool. Again, we're not to be swayed by emotions. We're swayed and we make decisions by data. And I think that's just important to be able to be emotionally intelligent and know when to keep your cool and just listen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if you had a situation where you were on the board and the board was divided on a key issue, how would you work to try to resolve that?
Well, I'm not quite sure how the, from what I've been told, the board members cannot meet with more than two at a time because that would be a quorum. So I'm not quite sure how they would make a decision. I just kind of feel like, and I could be wrong, that it's based on the information that I know. And I think if you can meet, you know, with one board member at a time, I suppose that would be a great way to kind of toss ideas and get ideas on how everybody is feeling. But if there's a disagreement, which like I said earlier, whatever the majority says, that is what is ruled and you accept that and you move forward as a board.
All right, thank you. And whenever you are ready to give us your closing statement, we're ready to listen.
Okay, so I've been in Hoover for sixteen years. With my pharmaceutical company, I had the opportunity, they were moving me and had the opportunity to move anywhere in Birmingham City. And we looked everywhere and we chose Hoover. We chose Hoover because of the excellent academics, the teachers. I mean, we have the most decorated teachers, you know, in the state, which is why I know a lot of schools are trying to steal our teachers. But, and then also the diversity and the real world experiences. I went to a private school and I didn't get a lot of real world experiences. And I wanted my boys to have that and I felt like Hoover provided that more so than Mountain Brook or Homewood or even Vestavia. So that's what we chose here. And we've been very happy being here. We've had incredible principals and teachers and counselors and we've really enjoyed it. And so I've been in the pharmaceutical industry and right now I sell a drug for metastatic breast cancer. So I have the opportunity to teach doctors and inform them on how to use my drugs that women can live longer and have more memories. And I'd love to be able to use the business acumen and the financial and strategic planning and the cross collaboration that I do to make Alabama a successful state for my company and make Hoover successful in our community for the Hoover City Schools. I have been mentoring kids since I was eighteen and I was already advocating for kids as a freshman in college, working with kids in Birmingham or the inner city Birmingham public housing. I actually spent three years before getting into pharmaceutical sales, working as an outreach specialist in Title One schools in Birmingham City as well as public housing. And man, those areas were rough. But in that position, I was partnering with teachers and parents to help them. Those children were at risk and they needed help. And then before then, while I was at U A B, and I say this not to toot my own whistle, but I created an organization called Generation Excel and I had small humble beginnings at U A B and I got students to try to be mentors to students in the Birmingham area. And eventually that grew until I partnered with Alabama Attorney General, his mentor Alabama program. And we had hundreds and thousands of college students helping all across the state and making a difference in kids' lives. And I say that because I understand the power of community and getting people to collaborate together to ensure that every student has equal access and they have the right to getting a great education. And we're so excited to be here. And I did want to leave you with one story. And I met this mother yesterday and it was just by chance and she knew nothing about me. We just met and I hadn't told her anything about who I am or what I do or what I was going to be doing tonight. And, but she told me they were new to Hoover. They moved here in August. And their daughter, they adopted her at age four. She's from Thailand and they got, she came, and she didn't know how to speak English whatsoever for at least a entire year. They lived in Crestwood and went to Birmingham City Schools to try to get intervention to help their daughter. And they had horrible experiences at two different schools. So they went to a private school, could not get the, the help that they needed. The private school didn't have, they didn't have those options or those resources. So they found another private school. I'm sure y'all know Spring Valley and they helped kids with learning disabilities and different learning styles. And so they went there for two years, but it was a stretch because it was twenty thousand dollars. And the, the daughter was getting bullied because it's a very small class. And the daughter actually told her, I want to go to public school. And the mom was like, not Birmingham City Schools. And their therapist at the time said, you should look into Hoover. I think Hoover can really help you. They have resources that are just fantastic. And she was like, we are not moving our family just to go to another school. And she's like, no, really. She said, my child is at Shades Mountain Elementary. And she said, it's fantastic. Just go take a look. So the last week of school in May of last year, she and her husband and the, the daughter at the time was in fourth grade and they did a tour of the school and the daughter's like, this is it. This is where I want to be. So between May and the first week that school started, they picked up their family and they moved here to Hoover just because of that. So the daughter was doing relatively well when she left Spring Valley. She knew math excellent, excellent. She knew math. But all of a sudden, at Shades Mountain Elementary, she was doing horrible in math and they couldn't figure it out. And so the teachers and the counselors spent time with her and they realized the, she has a language barrier still. That's why it was word problems and she couldn't figure it out. And so they put her on I E P and within four months, she was able to get the hang of it because they spent so much time with her. And now she's not on the I E P anymore and she's about to graduate and go to very middle school. But she said Hoover saved our life because she was not able to get that anywhere else. And she will scream to the rooftops how fantastic Hoover is. And I thought it was just so timely that I heard her message yesterday and just wanted to share that with you guys. And thank you for your time. I've had a great time.
Thank you very much. Well done.
Y'all have a good one.
Good evening. First, Mr. Hamilton, would you just say your name for the record?
Brian Hamilton.
All right. And have you decided whether you would prefer to give an opening statement or a closing statement?
Madam Chair, I'll defer to the end.
All right, sounds good. We'll save it for the end. So Counselor McClinton is going to kick us off with the first questions for you.
Okay.
Mr. Hamilton, thank you very much for applying. Appreciate that. Like everybody's heard before, it's unpaid and it's a very thankless job. But the reason why Hoover sees it's a great city, got great schools, again, good school board members is a big part of that. So I've got two questions I'm going to give you. And it's probably already in the packet that you answered that Counselor Driver gave you. But the first one is about the desegregation order. I'd like to get your understanding of it, the five green factors and what you think, since it's been a while, we've had this info since the school district's been around, what can be done in your best understanding of how we can get out of that order?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Counselor McClinton. So stout versus Board of Education, initial complaints filed in nineteen sixty-five, the plaintiff filed on behalf of his daughter and other similarly black children centered in and around forced desegregation. And so from sixty-five to twenty twenty-five, there have been a series of procedural activities and now it sort of exists as a consent decree. Hoover is subject to that consent decree, subject to a, a ruling relative to systems who may have sort of broken, broke away from, from Jefferson County. So we're still subject to it. So we're under federal sort of oversight, right? And it creates, my understanding is it creates operational administrative stuff that we have to do, right? In order to get preapproval and clearances from things, from bus routes to schools to sort of, you name it. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's a bit of an interesting exercise. How do you get to sort of that unitary status, right? I think we've done an excellent job of, of being thoughtful about the stakeholders in this community. But it is really a demonstration and it's up to sort of the federal judge. And I think we've got to continue to be diligent. We've got to continue to listen. I think we've got to continue to do what we've been doing in the past. But ultimately, we've got to continue to advocate about the good things that we're doing for all of our students.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure you're familiar with R C three.
Yes.
Been very successful. And some people ask, should we have another high school? Some people, like myself, think we should have another R C three located someplace else. What are your thoughts about that? Another high school or another R C three for workforce development? What do you think?
Yeah, Counselor McClinton, I, I think we, we've got to be very thoughtful in this economic times of uncertainty. I think one of the advantages that we've been able to do is we've been able to concentrate our resources and not spread them too thin, right? So you've got two things pulling against each other. You've got a increased demand for workforce opportunities, which is absolutely excellent and fabulous. But we also have decreased resources. We have economic uncertainty. You know, a lot of our funding will be coming from the Education Trust Fund, the economy, you know, a lot of that's sales tax and some other things. And so we've got to be able to plan appropriately so it is sustainable and make sure that we rationalize the model. Even though the demand is there, I think we've got to think long term and it remains to be seen whether or not we can support it in this economic uncertain times.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Hamilton. Just two quick questions. What do you believe to be the roles of a school board member?
Thank you, Counselor. The, the roles of a school board member are to support, supervise the superintendent, right? We're, we're there to, to make sure from a policy standpoint that the resources are, are there. We, we act on recommendations from the superintendent. We continue to advocate from our funding sources, make sure that, you know, the, the capital assets are in place, like buildings, in order to support our curriculum and making sure that curriculum and instruction is in place at the direction of the superintendent.
Thank you. Last one. What do you feel is the most important issue facing our school district? And how would you address that issue?
Yeah, I, I think one of the things that are excellent about Hoover City Schools is I, I'll just pick one is, is the, the student teacher ratio. In order for us to do that, you know, we, you know, we, we get allocations for, for funded units. But my understanding of, of the system is that we, we use a lot of local funding to maintain those ratios. Again, there's demand for families who want to move to Hoover to take advantage of good public schools. So we've got to be thoughtful about as demand increases. And again, we get pressure on the budget. There, we, we need to be mindful of trade offs and we need to be thinking about other ways to, to raise local funds. Very grateful for the support from the city and the council of the five million dollars on an annual basis. Got to maintain that that's there. We have a foundation. We've got to continue to support that and we've got to continue to grow corporate and philanthropic relationships.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Sweeney. Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, so two questions for me. What are your thoughts or views on regulating books or learning material into our K twelve libraries?
Yeah, you know, it's a, it's, it's a hot topic, right? And, and I think what we got to do is again, we've got to follow the lead of the professionals. We have higher professionals, the superintendent, his staff. And, and, and our thoughts, my, my thoughts are to listen to the superintendent and respond based on my life experiences as a parent, as a business person. But at the end of the day, you know, policy positions will be made based on a recommendation of the education professionals.
And last one, what are your views on the elimination of the U S Department of Education?
You know, I, I, I think it goes back to the economic uncertainty, right? And it's a little bit indirect. So let's say that you put Pell Grants at risk for higher ed, right? You're putting increased demand on the Education Trust Fund that funds in Alabama K twelve and two-year and four-year institutions. So, so when you have uncertainty, it will create budget pressures. Now that's one position. The second position is this, nobody can educate your, your kids better than the folks that's closest to it, right? And so fundamentally, I believe that, you know, those decisions about policy should be made here locally, particularly when you have a so-called unfunded mandates where you've got these federal stipulations. But we all have to figure out where to get the money from to do it.
All right. President Lyda?
Hamilton, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you so much for your interest and application. You have served on some very high-profile boards. You have served on some very high-profile boards within Metro Birmingham. I'm an old Federal Reserve Bank employee.
Okay.
So I've served on that board. But not only have you served, but you chaired a lot of those boards. I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt, if you're appointed to this board, it'll be unlike any board you've served on previously. And the fact that you'll be serving the community and the community will look at you, Mr. Hamilton, as their representative to the school system. With that will come them asking you to solve certain problems for them. Problems that are very emotional, right? When you talk about the education of children, these can be very emotional for parents. And they will expect you to help them walk them through to a resolution. Talk to us about how you would do that.
Yeah, I think, thank you for the question. I think, first of all, I think it's important to acknowledge that whenever you're a part of a team, you know, coalition building and making sure that you are engaged with stakeholders is going to be very, very important. At the end of the day, one individual school board member cannot do anything by themselves. The school board speaks with one voice. And even though it is challenging, there's nothing more, and I agree with you, there's nothing more precious than educating our children. And it is emotionally challenging. But I think what you have to do is, one, you got to be transparent. And then you have to honor your fiduciary obligations, right? You've got a duty of care and a duty of loyalty to the school board, acting with a reasonable person standard and making sure you're acting on factual information. It is tough, right? But this, the school board, the school system is the biggest, most important asset that we have in this community. And it's up to all of us to continue to maintain the stewardship of that asset. And that will be, at times, you know, communicating with folks about facts, things that you can share, things that you can't share. Oftentimes, it won't be things that people want to hear, but it will be the truth. And I think that is the way that we have sustained the school system up until now. And if we're going to continue to be resilient, that would be the attitude and approach I would take.
Right. How many Board of Education meetings here in the city of Hoover have you had a chance to attend?
I've attended one in person and I've attended a lot of them virtually.
Heard that a lot this evening. It's great to have that option available. So you may have noticed in some of your observations that it's not always an environment without tension.
Sure.
How do you handle disagreement or criticism, especially in a public or emotionally charged setting?
Yeah, thank you for that, Madam Chair. I will tell you, very early on in my public service career, I was a member of the Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority, of which Hoover is a member of. And while it is not as charged as public education, it is, you know, it is one of those things that people see transportation. They don't see people riding on the buses. They don't understand why you have to invest in it. And it can become a very controversial thing. But at the end of the day, you got to be in the game. And, you know, there's no one going to help and support our community other than the folks that are here. It's just us, right? It's our turn to steward these assets. And so I'm not a stranger to controversy or conflict. But that's why I led with, it's all about coalition building, right? And you have to assume best intentions from folks, right? You don't presuppose what folks, what they're bringing to the table. You got to take people as they come, build coalitions, and you build relationships one foxhole at a time, right? There are going to be some fights. There are going to be things we don't agree on, as it should be in a Jeffersonian democracy. This is how it works in America.
What would you do if your personal beliefs conflicted with the needs or values of the school system?
Yeah, I think I go back to the fiduciary duty, duty of loyalty, duty of care. Ultimately, I can articulate my lived experiences. But serving in a fiduciary capacity, you have to make the decisions that are based on what's best for the school board.
Thank you very much. So we are ready to listen to your closing statement whenever you are ready.
All right. So I'll just say this. I appreciate what you all are doing and thank you for your service, first of all. The second thing I will say is, you know, the school system is a gem. Folks move to Hoover for the school system. My wife and I are no exception to that. But having a good school system isn't by happenstance. It has to be steward, it has to be tended to, and you got to have good folks to continue to serve in a governance capacity. So that's why I'm here, because I don't take for granted that we'll always have a good school system without people serving in capacities like yourselves. And so this is the last thing I will say. When I have the opportunity to be on your side and I'm interviewing folks and there's a lot of good candidates to choose from, I always say, you know, I don't take for granted that people want the job, but I always like to tell them to say it. So what I want you to know is, I want to be on the team. I do. I want to be on the team. And I'm a team player. And so with that, I appreciate your time this evening and be happy to entertain any additional questions or observations you all may have subsequent to this meeting.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you and great job.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, first, would you please state your name for the record?
Sure, Jeremy Weiss.
Thank you for joining us this evening, Mr. Weiss. Have you decided whether you would rather give an opening statement or a closing statement?
A closing statement, please.
All right, we will hold that for the end. We'll start with Counselor McClinton. He's going to ask you the first couple of questions.
Hey, Jeremy.
Good.
Thanks for applying. Again, Hoover City Schools is great because I think we have great teachers, we've got great principals, but also starts with a great school board and y'all volunteer your time. So I've got one or two questions going to give you. I think it's probably been part of your packet already. But one of the biggest questions, you know, me being a byproduct of this, growing up in the South back in the 70s and 80s, it was busing and all kinds of stuff. And one of the biggest things that Hoover City School still has on its, I guess, docket is the stout versus Jeffco Board of Education. Help me understand in your thought process, what you've probably been reading about it. You know, it won't be an easy fix. And one of my biggest pet peeves is diverse as Hoover is and very, I would say, different than other cities, much more diverse than others. What can you, as a school board member, help us in doing to get us out of that order in the future?
So Steve, I think the, you know, my response would be that the board needs to continue the journey that it's on to be very focused on the green factors, making sure that, and as I did read and became even more familiar with all of those details, it's a lot, right? So it's a lot to encompass, but I think just continuing to focus and do all that is possible as a board to make progress there and to demonstrate that progress. So it's a general response, but there are a lot of details there that require constant oversight and focus. And I have no doubt that the board's already focused on it, just given what I've read and what I understand. But just continuing that effort.
Okay. I had another question I was going to give you that I've asked everybody else. But looking more at your background, it's very extensive in the professional world. Your background, how do you see what you do professionally coinciding in helping being a good school board member with your business background?
Sure. So my background really centers around customers. It's really about account management. So as I applied and as I listed various experience, you know, I could talk about, you know, budget planning, financial planning, implementing new products and services, all of those things. But I would say at the end of the day, it's really all about the customer and understanding the customer needs and trying to balance customer needs with the realities of what the organization can provide and finding that right balance. And so I feel like that is, you know, that's the mentality that I want to take into this. So do I feel like I'll be able to contribute in some specific ways based on my experience and skill set? Absolutely. But I think just, A, being a team player, making sure that as we work through issues as a board and arrive at a consensus, that we speak as one voice, and making sure that we understand the needs of those customers, whether it be the students, whether it be parents and guardians or the administration, understanding and creatively figuring out how to meet needs. And we live in an ever-changing world, right? So there are constant demands and constant changes that I believe we will have to continue to assess. Outside pressures, et cetera, that the board and the school system deals with currently and will continue to deal with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for being here, Jeremy. Just a couple of quick questions. What are your thoughts around a third high school?
My initial reaction is, before we would consider building a third high school, we should figure out how to maximize the existing capacity that we have. And I know that can be a sensitive discussion, right? But I believe that we have to be good stewards of the resources we've been given. And it would be no small thing to consider building a new high school, right? Just the capital expense of doing so. So I think continuing to creatively solution for the capacity that we have before we would move in that direction.
Very good. Last one. What do you feel is the most important issue facing our school system? And how would you go about addressing that issue?
I think, I think a couple of things. I think making sure that we stay well-positioned to continue to attract and hire talent and make sure that we keep our eye on the ball. In the business world, in this situation with the board and with the school system, we can't afford to take our eye off the ball, right? And everyone that's come before this board and this board is working to leave a legacy of maintaining that expectation that's been set and that we so appreciate in the city of Hoover. So I think just making sure that we stay well-positioned to continue to attract the right talent and that we're providing resources to those teachers, those educators and administrators, whether it be continuing education or training or other types of resources, finding ways to make sure they're equipped and so that they can focus on students when those students walk in the classroom every day. I think that's a priority. And I think that includes, I guess the second piece of that is, I think that includes being able to think creatively about how to attract and hire support staff in other positions, whether it be bus drivers or custodial staff or other positions that sometimes is difficult to attract. But you want to set the same vision and same standard for every single employee in the system. And so setting and maintaining that bar and making sure that we find ways to continue to attract that level of talent that we appreciate today.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So Counselor Murphy had to step away just before your interview. And he regretted that he could not be here. He's going to watch it later so that he can hear your responses. I did commit to ask his questions on his behalf. So what are your thoughts or views on regulating books and learning material that enter into K-12 libraries?
So my initial response would be that those materials need to be age-appropriate. I think that is a guideline that we need to make sure is consistently followed.
And then what is your view on the elimination or potential elimination of the United States Department of Education?
I think that's an interesting question. I'm going to say that I would need to think a little bit more about that and do a bit more research. It's a, it's an interesting dynamic that potentially creates some opportunities at the state level. But I think that would have to be carefully weighed and understood, just all the implications, all the pros and cons of doing so.
All right. President Lyda?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Weiss, welcome. Thank you for your application and for being here.
Thank you.
My question is about school funding. I see on your application, you have two children currently in the school system. Based on your experience of watching their educational journey, describe a little bit your opinion of the current state of finances for the school system and maybe what the future state looks like. So this was most basic form. Financially, do you believe we're meeting the needs of students today? In the future, if more funding is needed, when do you see that coming?
I do believe that we're meeting the needs of students today from a big picture standpoint. Having three boys come through or in the process of coming through, and my oldest just graduated and is in his freshman year of college. One, I want to say that it's neat to walk through that journey with your children and see them grow up and see the quality education they receive. And now to see his transition to college and how Hoover City Schools prepared him for that, I have no doubt that that led to his successful transition to college. And so we're personally very thankful for that. So I do think we're meeting those needs. But I also know, just, you know, from reading and chatting with folks and understanding that there are increasing pressures on special education funding and other areas of programming and curriculum. So it's something that we're going to have to continue to work to figure out. I think, again, it's another opportunity to think creatively about where those dollars come from. I mean, we have the partnership between the city of Hoover and the school board. But, you know, maybe there are other opportunities for private partnerships or funding in some way. So I may be getting out over my skis a little bit, but we should, we should think out of the box and we should be looking for additional funding that's available to the school system in order to continue to maintain that standard of excellence.
My last question is about school choice. You've obviously read up on a lot of issues regarding our school system. So school choice is a bill that Mike and his colleagues passed last year during the legislative session and the state's currently in the process of implementing it. School districts have to opt in to accept students from failing districts. Hoover has not made the decision to do that. If according to the board, what would be your stance on opting in to allow students to join our system?
So could you clarify again? Has that legislation passed?
Yes.
Okay.
Statistics today are making the decision as to whether or not they are opting in or out.
Okay. I have to admit, I'm not familiar with the details of school choice. But if, if there is an opportunity to opt out, you know, we should weigh the pros and cons of doing so. It's a, that's a significant decision and one, again, that needs to be weighed heavily. I see the merits in the bill and the legislation and it sounds like what it's attempting to accomplish. So I would definitely need to read up more and to be more familiar with the legislation. But we definitely want to weigh the pros and cons of that. You're welcome.
How many Board of Education meetings here in Hoover have you had occasion to attend?
I have not attended any Board of Education meetings.
Have you watched any online?
I have. I've watched a couple online, yes.
You may be aware from observation or just folklore that it's not always a happy environment. You know, that people express their concerns and sometimes it can be emotional. How do you handle disagreements or criticism, especially in a public or emotionally charged setting?
So, you know, I currently sit on a couple of boards and I've sat through city council meetings and other venues. I was just in a meeting with my executive team yesterday at work and it became heated at a moment. You've got to maintain the decorum of the meeting, in my opinion. It's got to be preserved. And, you know, I think there's a way to handle criticism and feedback in the moment to protect the integrity of that forum and that meeting and what the intent of the meeting is, while still respecting the opinions of folks that might come, whether it be a parent or a guardian or someone that came to speak on behalf of a student or to voice a concern. I think there's a way to hear them out and to respect them and respect what they have to say and their opinion while not losing control of the meeting and not losing the decorum of the meeting, if you will.
Okay. And how would you handle a situation if you were a board member, if the board was divided on a major issue?
I think those are the tough decisions that you have to hammer through. You have to, if you've taken a position based on your personal conviction or based on the information- or based on the information, the knowledge that you have, I think you need to be true to yourself in that conversation and just continue to, again, respect the opinions of those on the board. I mean, at the end of the day, you're a team, right? And I kind of alluded to this earlier. But making sure that, you know, you come together, you work through differences of opinion, you work together to solution for a common approach, something that everyone can embrace and take forward. So I think there's a way to do that in the same vein. There's a way to do that and respect those that have differing opinions. It may take a while and you may have to be, exercise some patience and continue to drive through that difficult part of that conversation. But I'm just a believer that you can work through those differences and you can come out the other side of those.
All right. You mentioned personal convictions, so that spurs a follow-up question for me. How would you, what would you do if your personal beliefs conflicted with the needs or values of the school system?
I think everyone has a set of personal beliefs of convictions, no matter what they are. And I think we all owe it to ourselves to be true to those in our personal walk with our families and in that environment. But I think as you step into this arena as a board member, you owe it to everyone to create that environment, to support that environment, to allow everyone to have that opportunity for that quality education. So I believe there's a way to compartmentalize some of those things. They may be preferences, et cetera. But you've got to think about the greater good of the school system and about creating that same opportunity for every student in the system. And I think that has to be the overarching driver as you, as you think about that. You know, if you look at the, if you look at the mission statement, just creating that caring environment, giving students that opportunity for that quality education, making sure that they have the opportunity to develop that exemplary character that we want from all of our kids, right? All of our children. I think there's a way to be successful in doing that and making sure that you're creating that opportunity.
Thank you very much. And when you're ready to give your closing statement, we're ready to listen.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Well, I just want to say thank you. I'm honored to have the opportunity to apply. And I appreciate the opportunity to come before you tonight and to interview you. So thank you for the opportunity. You know, I'm sure that every one of us, I've had the opportunity to talk with a couple of other candidates as I was waiting. And it was neat to sit and to talk about what brought us here and what brought us to this point. And, you know, we, we have such an amazing city and such an amazing school system. And I don't think we take it for granted. I believe that we are very proud of the school system that has been created over time. And it's not by chance, right? It's been a lot of really hard, purposeful work by a lot of people that have walked before, before this opportunity for one of us to sit on the board. So I feel very blessed personally. I know that my family does. Just the level of excellence that we can count on in our school system. And you have to be very intentional to make sure that that continues. I think you have to be laser-focused to make sure that we're doing the right things with all the external pressures, et cetera. We've got to make sure that we're doing the right things. And so, you know, I would be honored to be a part of that. I would appreciate that opportunity. I love the opportunity to serve in various settings today, whether it be other boards or whether it be at church or other venues. I love to give back. And I think, you know, being what I would consider a longer-term resident of Hoover, this is home. This is where we work. This is where we play. This is where we shop. This is where we, this is the center of our universe, right, for our family. And so what better place to, there's no better place to plug in and to serve. And so I've been seeking and pursuing those opportunities and serving in other capacities. I feel like this is an opportunity, yet a different opportunity for me, to give back and to serve. So I am absolutely committed. And I believe those that know me and know where I've served and where I'm serving, I'm absolutely committed to being true to the values, to the mission statement of the school board, of making sure that I come in to roll up my sleeves and to learn. There's a lot of things that I know I don't know. But I think I've demonstrated in other situations that I will roll up my sleeves and I'll give 100% and commit to learning what is necessary to be a valuable contributor to that situation. And so I would, I would love that opportunity. It's important that we do things for the right reasons and that we do them in the right way. And I believe that our school system does that and that our board has set that standard. And I would love to be a part of continuing that standard. So I appreciate all of those that have come before this point in time. And if afforded the opportunity, would love to serve and would certainly appreciate your consideration as you weigh candidates for this opportunity. So thank you very much.
Great. We appreciate you being here and you did a nice job.
Thank you. Thank you.